6:00 PM, please, can I have everybody stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Apologize if I go in and out once in a while, because I am apparently fighting off some cold right now at this second. So, which really didn't affect me until about thirty minutes ago.
Of course.
Now I'm like getting a scratchy throat. If I lose my voice, it's gonna be up to you.
Okay.
Mr. VP.
I don't know how he's gonna get second unless he does this.
It'll work.
Alright, so first thing on the agenda is discussion with the Quabog Regional School District Superintendent, Mr. Duff regarding the district's proposed fiscal year twenty-five budget. Two thousand twenty-five budget. How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for having us back. I think that what we've been doing over the last few months has been very helpful. I'd like to thank the budget subcommittee meeting, meetings that we have and the folks that are on the budget subcommittee. We've met six times over the last month and a half to dialogue on our budget. I know Ray is not here, but Ray's been at every meeting trying to inform himself about how our budget works. The purpose of those budget subcommittee meetings was to put together a budget that is as transparent as it possibly can to get feedback from the folks that were there on how the information would be presented. We ended up presenting the budget to the budget subcommittee on February fifth and then to the full school committee on February twelfth for a preliminary budget overview. The purpose of that was to give the budget subcommittee and the full school committee a month to digest our budget. We did present to the town of Westbrookfield on February fifteenth, so that they had an idea where our preliminary budget was. And our goal was to present it to the board of selectmen here and to the town manager tonight.
Hold on one second. Yeah, you got the door?
Yeah. The door's locked.
It's probably right on you. Oh, before you continue to go on, I forgot to give my little spiel. So everybody is aware, we're recording via Zoom. Also, local access network is recording and televising us. And we will be livestreamed on Facebook also, so everybody's aware. Because of that, a requirement with social media is please identify who you are, if you're gonna speak, and your position with the town, or if you're a resident. Before you speak, this way we document that. Thank you, sir.
So Steve Duff Superintendent of Schools, Quabog Regional School District, also a resident of Warren. So our goal was to present the budget as early as we can. This is the earliest that we've presented a budget since I've been at Quabog, not in the role of superintendent, but in the role as principal at both Warren Elementary and Quabog Regional Middle High School. So our goal was to get it in the hands of the towns as quickly as possible. This is not the end budget. This is what our proposed budget and the proposed budget that I moved forward to the school committee that would ask the school committee to take a vote on on March eighteenth. And that's in the last slide what the next steps are. But this is as tight of a budget as we've come in with. The line items that we could control, which are like your tax, office supplies, things like that, came in at under one percent, it was point seven-five percent. And as we go through the budget, there are things that you can't control, which are like contractual obligations. There was a three percent increase on salaries. Those are items that are beyond our control because they're contractual, and we'll show you how that all broke out. So the purpose tonight is to show you how we developed our budget, the steps that went into it, what makes up the bottom line numbers, and then answering the questions moving forward from there and potentially setting up another meeting with the board of selectmen or the advisory committee or finance committee to talk about any questions that they may have regarding our budget. So this is our very preliminary budget that was presented, like I said, to the school committee on February twelfth. And once again, thank you to Ray and the budget subcommittee for the countless hours that they put in to kind of hold us accountable to what we needed to do. But at the same point, we understand the needs of the towns. So we really came in with what we think is a very fiscally responsible budget. And I think we'll articulate that throughout this presentation.
Appreciate it. One second please.
Yep.
Did you try to unlock?
Thank you, Larry. Alright, so our vision is to provide a safe, supportive, and challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. That's been our vision since I've been at Quabog, and I think it's one that kind of fits into what we call a portrait of a graduate. Where is a student starting in kindergarten and what skills are they leaving in twelfth grade, whether it's college, military, or workforce? I think we've done a great job over the last few years of concentrating. We have kids that are always going to college, but we're trying to provide opportunities for kids that aren't going to college. And I think that's evident through what you see with the fire academy. Somebody had just mentioned something about EMT. Oh, you were talking about EMTs. We do have an earmark to start an EMT program, which will cost the town no money. But as when you talk to Adam, and as you know, because he talks a lot about it, EMTs are hard to find right now because...
A big need for them.
There's a big need. So this is an opportunity that we're looking to provide our students next year. And it would be like the second half of the fire academy, but also kids that might be interested in going into that field that aren't necessarily interested in firefighting and still be interested in being an EMT. So we're looking to offer and expand that opportunity to our kids, which once again will help benefit the towns that we service. And that's the earmark that costs the town no money. Costs the towns no money. Our district for the mission, our mission is to form a partnership with parents, community, prepare a diverse population of students, become lifelong learners and a nurturing self, a safe environment with high expectations, so they become responsible, productive citizens in an ever-changing global society. I know that you guys were there at this meeting. This is a big meeting because the new fire marshal was supposed to be on the cover of All Hands Herald. And it was, and I kind of find it ironic because it says promoting fire service careers. Vocational school students visit MFA Massachusetts Fire Academy, went on a vocational school. But we have been recognized as being one of the top programs, not only in the state, but we've been nominated to be a top program in the country. So that speaks volumes, not only to the fire department, but also to the school district and our community for putting their best foot forward to give our kids these opportunities, which is outstanding. Alright, so summary, our total operating assessment, which makes up everything that Warren would be responsible, is going from four million three hundred fifty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars to four million three hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. The difference between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five is twenty-one thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars, which is a point zero five percent increase. For Westbrookfield, you can see that their increase was eighty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. For a total increase to Westbrookfield, a one point seven-six percent. That makes up your local net operating assessment for each town. Westbrookfield was a little bit higher this year because the way that the government, or the way that the state figures out your foundation, the amount that you can pay, Westbrookfield's amount that they could pay according to the state was more than Warren's amount that they could pay. So their local contribution went up a little bit, which that's that difference there.
Were they happy about that?
They were, you know, not necessarily. But I think when you look at the overall net assessment to the town, you know, I can tell you over the years, and I'm sure that you guys have looked over the number of years, how much the net increase has been. We've never been at point oh-five percent before. That's less than one percent of the net operating assessment. Transportation reimbursement has a little bit to do with that. The state came through with chapter seventy-one money, which is regional transportation. I'll talk a little bit about that in a later slide. The original, and I don't know if Jim made copies of the presentation I sent to you this afternoon. The original actually was Warren being a lot less than that, but we wanted to be a little bit conservative with the transportation reimbursement because we have a new governor. Typically, it goes up a little bit. But I, you know, speaking with some of the state legislators, I wanted to keep the number at a reasonable number, a conservative number, because if we went to an extreme and it didn't fall through, then it would hurt the town more because you would be responsible for the transportation on that side. On this end of it, if it comes in higher, that money automatically goes back to the town, as you know. So we're trying to be forward-thinking and hope that we are able to give you a check at the end of the year for transportation, rather than saying, here's a bill for a hundred thirty thousand. Okay, well, we'll talk about that when we get to that.
And despite, so I guess even though Westbrookfield's going up more percentage-wise and dollar-wise, is the rough sixty-forty split still in force?
Yeah, it's fifty-nine forty-one. Last year it was fifty-eight forty-two. This year it ends up being fifty-nine percent for Warren, forty-one percent for Westbrookfield.
So if, so in this case, if Westbrookfield goes up a little bit more, then we actually go down a little bit more?
Yeah.
Because we gotta maintain the sixty-forty-ish.
Yeah, fifty-nine forty-one this year. And that is all based upon your October first SIMS data reporting to the state. So that's how your foundation budget works. So these numbers are based on October first.
Mr. Duff, kind of one thing. Jason Morgan.
Oh, I don't know.
Budget chairman and member of Warren, a living Warren. The only thing that doesn't sixty-forty is that minimum requirement that the state sets doesn't follow the sixty-forty that we set. That's everything afterwards. When the state comes in and says, Westbrookfield, you owe this much as a minimum contribution. Warren, you owe this much. They do it separately, they do it based on probably what they want overall, but it does not follow that sixty-forty percentage that we do after the fact stuff. That can, that can, that can be, it could be sixty-four the other way for what they come up with. That's, that doesn't follow that.
So these numbers aren't necessarily sixty-four.
Correct. Yes, no, not necessarily sixty-four.
And maybe something else. Okay, alright. Again, it's disconnected from the ratio.
Sure, you just the minimum contribution.
You can see that.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, Westbrookfield's giving more than Warren is, even though we have sixty-one percent of the population.
Sorry, hold on a minute. Well, that helps.
No, yeah, that's good, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Duff.
No, thank you. So once again, I think it's important to point out what the district has done in terms of efficiency for both towns, for their local assessment and the payoff of that. We're gonna see a huge payoff in five years. But I think it's important to note that, you know, we did partner with the town of Warren on the QRSD Green Communities Upgrade with the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning at Warren Elementary. Project total was three hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. We worked very closely with Town Administrator Ferrera on that. And I can tell you that I'm hoping, we budgeted a little bit less on fuel this year, but we're hoping to use a third of our fuel. But I don't think we're gonna have a good baseline on that until we get through a full heating season. So I think we're gonna look at the data at the end of next year and be able to make more appropriate adjustments to it. But once again, I don't want to come in way under and then have to come back and say, wow, we need another twenty thousand dollars, or twenty thousand dollars gallons worth of fuel. So we're hoping that that pays off.
I'm hoping after this week it starts heating up.
Yeah, that would be the goal.
Going outside.
So we are, with that grant, we are able to regulate the heat much more efficiently. We shut it down on the weekends where before you had to continuously keep it moving.
Rooms are a lot more comfortable now.
Yep, set between four degrees, you can either go from sixty-eight to seventy-two degrees. And that's it. So there's no rooms that are going up to eighty. They can't, they only get four points either. Plus a two from sixty-eight.
Were their teachers bringing it up to eighty?
Well, they would like to, some would like to. They're used to the heat there now. The town of Westbrookfield, we're doing a lighting upgrade at Westbrookfield Elementary School. That's two hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars. QRMHS, we're doing a hundred percent OBR upgrade with the lighting system at Quabog, both indoor and outdoor. That's three hundred and nine thousand dollars. At WEP, at Westbrookfield Elementary School, we're doing a building envelope upgrade through National Grid for thirty-eight thousand. Quabog, we got a grant for this summer, three hundred and four thousand dollars to upgrade. Essentially what happened in Warren, we're doing at Quabog. We got a grant for that, that's a hundred percent paid through a grant. So we're gonna change all of the controls at Quabog. So we're hoping to offset, this is a more immediate, this will be a more immediate payback because we're gonna be able to control our oil much more effectively at Quabog as well. Quabog was very similar to Warren. We did the lighting upgrade inside the gym. We just, we got sponsored for a WCES lighting upgrade through National Grid for two hundred thirty-seven thousand. When we say a hundred percent OBR, that means you can pay back the entire project on your bill repayment. So your bill won't go up, it'll stay the same or go down. The only issue we ran into with at Warren is the OBR on that one was seven point two years, but they won't allow you to extend it out past five years. So we presented it to the school committee. We think that it's an investment in the future for Warren Community Elementary School. The project for two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars will cost fifty-six thousand dollars. Spread out over five years is a nine hundred and forty-two dollars a month. And after that...
Is that factored into the budget now?
It is. This is all factored in. Everything that's on this board is factored in. Okay? So the total project efficiencies were one point five million dollars that the district took on in one year. We did have, the total project cost to local assessments is fifty-six thousand dollars over five years, which was that nine hundred and forty-two dollars a month, which belongs to Warren, unfortunately, because it's Warren Elementary. But it's, when you, we're going from a hundred and forty kilowatts per hour to forty kilowatt, forty, I'm sorry, a hundred forty thousand to forty thousand kilowatts per hour. So we're dropping in a hundred thousand kilowatts per hour, which is gonna be...
Really significantly adds up.
Oh, it does. You know, and after five years, I think we're gonna see a decrease. We see a decrease because the kilowatts per hour for electricity has gone down. But once we get beyond that five years, we're gonna see some very significant savings for the towns, both in fuel and in electricity, which I think is great for, great for the towns. So the total project cost for the one point five six million dollars worth of projects is fifty-six thousand dollars, which is nine hundred forty-two dollars a month over five years. So I think we've been very effective in this area.
Now, a quick question on that before we move on.
Yep.
Is there, is there interest on that fifty-six thousand dollars over that time?
No interest.
Okay. Because I was gonna say, if that's the point, it'd probably be easier to do an article and get paid off than pay interest on something like that.
Zero percent interest.
Okay.
Alright, which is great. We did have Christopher Mason from the Department of Energy and Resources inspector come out. He's a state inspector. He said this is the most progressive and successful district that he's been in. He said not many districts get as many initiatives as we do. We've been partnering, you know, Jim did a great job. We've worked with Patrick Monomie in the past, but we've made some connections and we've been able to work very closely with Guardian on a lot of incentives that we didn't even know were available. So it's been very, very, a very positive impact on the district and as well as the local assessments.
Just two questions. So you think you're gonna use a third of the amount of oil?
That would be my, that would be my guesstimate, guesstimate. But once again, I don't want to go down a third and then come up short. We're better off...
You can end up with a couple really cold months coming up, yeah.
Yeah, so you need to collect some data over time. So we did reduce it a very minimal amount. We reduced it by five thousand gallons this year into this budget coming up. There could be better savings than what we're realizing. And what you typically see is when we have the savings, it rolls into E and D. And then we take the E and D and we use it to offset the local assessment the next year. I'd rather have money to offset the local assessment the following year than have to go to the town and ask for additional money because we underbudgeted for fuel. So we're very closely tracking that data. We're at one fifty, a hundred fifty gallons a day. And on one day, we're down to roughly eighty gallons a day. But once again, it fluctuates with the temperatures. But it's not like a smokestack anymore. We're just blowing heat out of the building because of this project, we're able to regulate it. So we're hoping to see that, that kind of savings.
Yeah, the payback.
Yeah, so we'll see that, you'll see that more closely in next year's budget, only because we'll have some, two years of data that we can bounce us off of.
Yeah. The other question is, with electricity, can you use alternate suppliers? You know, like home, you can go with like Constellation and all these different suppliers. Can you do that as a district?
Well, we use, I know that you probably know, but we use National Grid. And that's been the supplier for a lot of the municipalities that we use. We do have credits through, this was a question that we picked up. We have solar on all three of our buildings. Solar, there's a credit you get on your bill, but there's also a fee that you have to pay. So we paid thirty-six thousand dollars in fees for an eighty-six thousand dollar credit. If you take the thirty-six thousand away, we get a fifty thousand dollar credit on our electric bill because of the solar that we run at Warren, Westbrookfield, and Quabog. But we're always looking, we go out to bid. It was nice to have a different financial director last year who had some connections to Western Mass because we're Worcester County. So we're able to bounce off two different collaboratives to see where we get our best pricing on energy. And our electricity goes out to bid. So National Grid is your primary, but there's an intermediate company in between that does all of the work for you. So we go out to bid every year. Every two years on this, we got a very good rate this year. And oil came in at two point six, two dollars and sixty-two cents a gallon. We were at three dollars and four cents a gallon last year.
Yeah, oil's come down.
It's come down. So we locked in for two years last year with that rate. Once again, it's always a gamble because you don't know what's gonna happen with oils going back up.
Next year it could be cheaper or twice as expensive.
Yeah, you just don't know. Yeah, so this year we locked in at three oh-four, which was actually a pretty good rate to lock in at. It's just, it's a gamble, but it's one that you have to kind of build your way through.
Before you move on, have you guys looked into maybe adding more solar on the property somewhere?
So we have, yeah, we've discussed that in the past. We have quite a bit of land at Quabog. And we looked at, we looked at even selling trees off of Quabog and having it logged in the back down corner. It wasn't, when we looked at it, and that was probably five years ago, it wasn't beneficial. But we have been in contact, Financial Director Wagner has been in contact with our solar company to see. And I think that over the next year or two, there might be a potential to have some movement there.
Izzy, it'd be nice to provide for the school. You know, again, with solar, we're very iffy about it with these large-scale solar companies. But for, you know, municipal projects, it makes sense to do because it's small. It's coming right back into our buildings. You know, it's not a commercial business that the town benefits nothing from.
Right. So we are looking at those alternatives. That's something that's always on our radar. And like I said, I know Financial Director Wagner has spoken with the solar company. So we will be progressively moving forward with that. On the next slide, we'll show you our efforts and grants. I can't say enough about Madeline Smola, who's our grant, I can't say enough about Mark Estrella, who's our financed, I'm sorry, our facilities director. Between the two of them working on the first grants with energy efficiency and Madeline really working on grants for education, we did really well this year. One grant that we received is called the GLEAM Grant, which is growing literacy equity across Massachusetts. If you watch Governor Healy's last press conference, she said she was gonna dump thirty million dollars into early literacy. We're two years into that program that she's saying that she's gonna dump thirty million dollars into now. This is our second year. What I think you'll find about Quabog is that we're very proactive at going out and finding what is gonna be the next step in terms of educating our kids. So this is our second year of the GLEAM Grant. That total for that grant for pre-K through five early literacy curriculum was five hundred and eight thousand dollars, with professional development of two hundred and ten thousand, with a total of, total of that grant for seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The curriculum, one of the big questions that we ask is you buy it today, do we have to buy it tomorrow? This is six years of curriculum. So this helps offset that local assessment. We're able to bring our line items down with the ones we can control. A lot of it is due to her, Madeline, being able to get grants, which are continuation grants or grants that span over six years. So we don't have to buy the new literacy curriculum that the state recommends. Innovation Pathways is funding for science equipment and supplies, computers, curriculum, training for teachers. We received twenty-five thousand dollars for computer science and a hundred thousand dollars for biomedical. The total grant for that was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Once again, that's six years of materials. Social emotional learning, I know that you guys have probably heard a lot about SEL. I'm sure that Chief Mallett and Chief LaVoy can talk a lot about SEL. It's, it's out there. So we get a grant for social emotional learning through the state for a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. What it allowed us, allowed us to do is, because we had to cut positions from the budget over the last several years, we're able to hire a social worker at Warren Elementary, a social worker at Westbrookfield Elementary, and a social worker at Quabog to kind of track the needs of students, attendance, things of that nature, and to give students additional support. So we're able to use that grant for that as well as social...
Does that pay for that, those three positions fully?
It does. Yep, so those positions are not, those are, those are hourly positions. And we can only expand it out as far as that money goes. This, none of this, except for one grant, and I'll explain that to you, none of this is in the operating budget. Okay, we're not paying for salaries out of grants. We're not doing that, we're not paying for salaries out of extra money any longer. The operating budget is the operating budget, this is what we need to move forward. These are additional positions that we're able to get through grants to help support our kids. And without it, you know, we would be, it would be difficult with some of the SEL stuff that's going on. High-quality instructional materials. When we look at the K to five curriculum, we also have K through twelve curriculum, which HQIM is highly qualified instructional materials. It's an ELA curriculum, training, coaching for all English teachers, grade six through twelve. The curriculum was a hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, PD a hundred fifteen thousand, total of two hundred forty-nine thousand. Twenty-first century after-school programs is for Quabog High School and for Warren Community Elementary School. That allows parents to, it gives kids the opportunity to stay after school, be involved in an organized club, whether it's cooking, robotics, theater. At the elementary school, they run after-school program with the kids, twenty-first century after-school programming. All of these programs are free of charge to our families and provide our students with opportunities after school. We always say between three and six are some of the most difficult time for kids that, you know, if they don't have anything structured from those times, it's easy not to do what we need to do. So this provides our kids opportunities. The total of that grant was two hundred ninety-five thousand. Our ASOS grant, which is after-school and out-of-school time, is for the middle school after-school program. They do chess, cooking, esports, that was a hundred thousand dollars. Our Acceleration Academy, which is super exciting, we just got this grant, is intensive teaching for the highest-need students. It's a math academy during February and April break. So students right now, we have over forty students at Westbrook, I'm sorry, at Warren Community Elementary School, from both elementary schools, that are participating in a math acceleration academy, free of charge to their parents Monday through Friday this week. The total of that grant was forty-seven thousand two hundred. Our Student Opportunity Act, which is the one position in the budget that is budgeted through a grant, is our literacy coach for grades K through five. And we have a K and two special education support. There's a reason it's K and two, I'll get to that when I get to it tonight. But the literacy coach, we have a brand-new early, the GLEAM, new literacy program at the elementary schools. You need somebody to bring both schools together and model how those lessons go and interpret data and then inform the instructor from there. Our literacy coach is doing a spectacular job. It was a continuation into this year, so we're able to keep that literacy coach for one more year through a grant. If we can't continually have that literacy coach, depending upon where the numbers fall, that literacy coach would go back to a classroom. Or if the numbers are favorable, we still need coaches. We just, we don't have any coaches outside of this one here. And she's doing a spectacular job. Ignite is grade one online tutors. This is at both elementary schools. Every first-grade student gets fifteen minutes of tutoring from, live tutoring from an individual. It's via Zoom, but it's one-on-one tutoring every day. So they get that during their literacy block. The cost of that, well, not the cost, the grant for that was a hundred sixty-five thousand. So if we take, so you can see this was grade one. With the Student Opportunity Act, we put special education support in K and two. What this does is early literacy is K through two typically. So we have the foundation of our students being covered by some of our grant work, so we can build their foundational skills up, so their learning readiness when they get to third grade. The real important years are K through two. Three through twelve are very important, but we learn those foundational skills in the overgrown levels. So the total grant revenues were one point nine million, one point nine six million dollars. So if you take that and you combine it with what we've done in energy efficiencies, you're looking at roughly three point four million dollars in grants and energy efficiencies, which ultimately help impact the local assessment because we're not using this, the purchased materials. And we're looking at this as a long-term solution because it's a six-year project. Our next one is to look at a math grant for next year so that we can continue with that collaboration between both elementary schools. So that's what we've done to help offset the budget.
There you go.
Okay? So there's been kind of work there. Alright, so the operating, operating, no, that's good, operating summary. It's just, you can go ahead. Thanks. Operating assessments by town, you can see that the town operating assessment, across everybody, the total operating assessment went up a hundred and three thousand dollars, twenty-one thousand of that to Warren and eighty-one thousand to Westbrookfield. So our total increase over the entire district was a hundred thousand dollars over last year's budget on the net operating assessment. So the operating assessment for Warren, the total operating assessment, went from four million three hundred fifty-four thousand to four million three hundred seventy-five thousand, which was an increase of twenty-one thousand six hundred sixty-four. Transportation, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, down to six hundred and forty-four thousand. And that's your assessment. So the regional, what happens is, as you know, in a regional district, you get reimbursed from the state. That was the incentive to regionalize is because they would give you reimbursement for transportation. We actually went to one point three nine three... We actually went to one point three nine three million on our regional, uh, regional transportation reimbursement. We cut that down a little bit. That money may still come in, but if it doesn't, that's where we were talking at the beginning. I don't wanna be on the wrong side of that and have to come back to the town. I'd rather give the town money back, not me, but the district would rather give the town money back at the end of the year and be.
You're not giving us money back.
We have the last few years. Um, but I'd rather the transportation go back to the town and be under budgeted for it and then have to go to a special meeting and say, well, we need a hundred thousand dollars for transportation. So we were a bit more conservative with that. That doesn't help the net operating assessment. That actually makes the net. When we're more conservative, it makes that net operating assessment go up. If we're more aggressive, the net operating assessment will come down. But I'm not comfortable being too aggressive with that because, once again, it's all about our transparency. Above minimum contribution, six oh nine to seven sixty-eight, it's a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar increase. The minimum local contribution for Warren went up seventy-six thousand dollars. Sorry. Operating assessment for Westbrook Field, total operating assessment, four point five million to four point six four, or four point, four point, uh, four million, six hundred forty-two thousand dollars. It was an increase of eighty-one thousand dollars. Transportation decreased by ninety thousand, one hundred and seventy. That had to do with that transportation reimbursement from the state. Above minimum contribution went up a hundred and four thousand dollars. The minimum local contribution went up a hundred and thirty-four thousand, fifty dollars. So their ability to pay went up by a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for next year. Revenue, what we take in, the town assessments, uh, these aren't necessarily proposed. This is, well, it's proposed now because we don't have the actual numbers from the state yet. Um, but this is what the town assessments would be. Uh, the difference would be a hundred and three thousand dollars. State aid, uh, went up two hundred and, or the state aid came up two hundred fifty-one thousand. Other revenues, um, are eighty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty, which is Medicare, um, so Medicaid. When we fill out, we're able to bring the money back in. It's revenue that offsets the budget. E and D, last year we used two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of E and D. This year I'm recommending we use three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of E and D. We have talked about this every year. I'm projecting anywhere from five hundred and fifty to five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in E and D. We're waiting to get it cer- certified. You can keep up, or it's recommended that you keep up to five percent of your budget, which is a little over a million dollars in E and D. Um, I think that's too much. Last year we had about fifty thousand dollars remaining in E and D, which I don't think is enough. Um, I think around two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred thousand dollars is where I would be comfortable with E and D. Um, so we are taking the E and D that we have and we're putting three hundred and seventy-five thousand over towards the budget. Uh, capital revenue is a hundred and forty to a hundred and thirty-eight, and then our total revenue, uh, was up four hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars. State revenue, um, what we get for our kids, we typically, last year we did well with state revenue. This year we did not do well with state revenue. Uh, we got minimum aid, uh, which is your number from last year, plus thirty dollars per student. So we're gonna walk in thirty, thirty-one thousand, twenty dollars, uh, from the state. If we look at salary, salary increases were three hundred and seventy-five thousand. If you take thirty thousand that we got from the state, it leaves you at a deficit of two hundred and forty-five thousand, uh, three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars right off the bat. Typically, these aren't the final numbers. This is the governor's version. Typically, when it gets to the house, it'll go up a little bit. Um, the most that we've seen it go up in the last five or six years is up to sixty dollars per kid, uh, which would bring us to sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand, forty dollars. If it goes up, that will help offset the local assessments. Okay? That's what we're hoping for. Chapter one, transportation. This number is really one thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars. We brought it down because you never get a hundred percent of your transportation reimbursement. Typically, transportation will go up a little bit, um, when it gets to the house, but we have a new governor and there have been some pretty significant nine C cuts already, if you have heard about that. Um, I think that the migrant families and things like that have hurt our budget, um, and I think we've, have felt pinch, pinches with that. So I'm comfortable coming in at the, at the one point two oh five. I'm not comfortable coming in at closer to one point four million. Um, I just don't think that's a, a good gamble for the towns to offset that local assessment and then come back and ask for it. Like I said, I'd rather be over budgeting regional transportation because the town gets the money back anyhow. And then our charter reimbursement is down thirty-seven thousand, five, four hundred fifty-three dollars.
What's the charter reimbursement?
Uh, the amount that we get back for kids that go up in charter schools.
Oh, okay. So why are we getting less now?
Because we have less.
Yeah, so it's a function.
So there's less that are actually going to charter schools?
So you get less money. It's based on the number of kids that go out. Alright, so our interest income is seven hundred fifty dollars. Our fees for parking are usually around twenty-six hundred dollars. Medicaid, uh, reimbursement, eighty-two thousand, and miscellaneous revenue is seven thousand, which is like building use.
You guys are charging to park?
Kids, yeah.
Really?
Yep. Fifty dollars a kid, per year, to be able to park.
Is that when they, they put their parking spot back there and they?
And they paint it and all that stuff. It's kind of a rite of passage, but we also use part of this to help offset snow removal.
I didn't know you actually charged them for that.
Yeah, fifty dollars. It was a big increase from twenty-five to fifty.
I like parking there where you can go anywhere.
We don't charge you.
You're gonna have two kids at some day, right?
I know.
We'll be commuting together, I promise you. And then E and D, last year we used two hundred forty and this year we're using three hundred seventy-five. The difference is a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Mr. Duff, just, sorry, I mean, last year though, that's basically though, we didn't have really more to put into that, right?
Last year we did it. No, I think we were at two ninety last year and we ended up at fifty thousand. Um, and I can tell you that on any given day, we talked about this, I was talking to town administrator for about this yesterday. We had six families, or six additional students move into our district, um, which would require a sub separate program. If we didn't have programming to service those students, then that would be an out-of-district tuition. If you took those six times sixty thousand, you're looking at three hundred sixty thousand. Plus transportation, you're looking at close to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and that would be a, a cost that the district would incur that we have no choice except for to cover. I know we talked a little bit about this when you guys had come up to talk about some of the special education portion of it. Those are costs that are unpredictable. It's kinda like if a select member just showed up and they said, okay, I'm here, and you have to pay two hundred thousand dollars for this select member and you don't budget for it. So I think when we look at E and Ds, E and D is good and bad. It gives you a little bit of security. But if we have move-ins that we can't cover, then E and D would help offset that. Or if we had a leak in a roof or something like that, we can use the E and D to offset those types of things as well. Um, so I, I'm comfortable with one seventy-five to two hundred thousand. I don't think it's a good idea for the district to go much lower than that. And we get dinged on the audit for it every year. That's the one thing that we do get flagged on. Just because our E and D's too low.
The three seventy-five is gonna leave you with one seventy to?
Yeah, one seventy-five to two hundred.
Okay.
Yep.
And does that bring you in the grace of the audit?
It would, it would get us off of being flagged.
Okay.
Each year, um, because we do go a little bit lower than we should each year because we're trying to keep the local assessments down. But at the same point, you have to stay, you, you wanna be in the favor of the audit, but we've been dinged for it every year. Um, I think maybe it'd be nice not to be dinged for that for a year, but, uh, we'll see where we end up. Alright, those are, our capital revenue, um, for our bonds. You know, you get, you get money in and you send money out with your bond payments. Um, so our payments, our bond revenue, our capital revenue has gone down a little bit because our principal has gone down. So as your principal goes down, your interest goes down, which was a reduction of eighteen hundred dollars in that, which you'll see on the expense side. There is no, just so that everybody knows, you, you can say that, that's okay. There was no capital, um, bond for Westbrook Field because they don't have any capital projects going at the school right now. Um, we have the floor and the doors and windows. Okay. Uh, for the operating expenses, district-wide, uh, what, um, Finance Director Wagner did is we have staff that work district-wide, um, but were assigned to buildings. Um, so for the purpose of looking at district-wide staffing, we pulled staff out of the elementary buildings that were shared between Warren, Westbrook Field, and Quabog, just for this presentation on the backend and what we call Tyler, uh, Tyler ERP Pro for our payroll. It's broken out to what percentage of time they've worked in each building. But for our district-wide staff, there was an increase in five hundred fifty-six thousand. It wasn't additional positions. It was pulling people out of three buildings, just putting them into a district-wide budget. Uh, school choice sending, uh, was up to twenty-two thousand dollars. Charter school sending, uh, down four hundred seventy-seven for the tuitions. Our debt principal expense, uh, stayed the same and our interest went down just a little bit on the expense side. So our total expenditures, uh, went up four hundred eighty-seven, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Alright, our operating expense by campus, that's where that district-wide number comes in. When you pull the staff out of Warren, it's eighty-eight thousand. You pull the staff out of Westbrook Field, it's sixty-four thousand. The staff at Quabog, fifty-two thousand, four hundred forty-seven, was the increase on that, by moving people around. Alright, transportation, there's your fifty-nine, forty-one, uh, Warren, for the total of six hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Your estimated share, and the estimated share for Westbrook Field is four hundred forty-eight thousand, nineteen dollars. That's that sixty-one, fifty, uh, sixty, fifty-nine, forty-one split, uh, for.
That's for transportation.
That's for transportation.
Reimbursed mostly anyways.
Well, that's your, uh, non-reimbursable.
Oh.
Piece. Yep. So with transportation, um, once again, I wanna commend the school committee. We have, um, I, we had a three-year contract with two years to opt in. Um, last year we opted in for our fourth year. We had a decision whether to go out to bid in January or to opt in for the fifth year. To opt in for the fifth year, it was a two percent increase, which was twenty-nine thousand dollars. Our fair was that if we went out to bid, the increase would be much higher than two percent. As you know, the cost for, of, um, travel has escalated quite a bit. So the overall transportation, um, cost increase was twenty-nine thousand dollars this year. So I think the school committee did a great job of kinda bringing the pros and cons. To only have a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase from one year to the next on transportation, um, I think was a wise decision on their behalf. Particularly as the regional, uh, transportation reimbursement comes in. If it's higher and you're only increasing by twenty-nine thousand dollars, then that net operating assessment for the town is gonna go down. Um, which was a great move, I think, by the school committee.
So, before we move on, now how do you come up with the figure for the fifty-nine percent and the forty-one percent between the two towns?
It's based on the October SENS reporting to the state. The state comes up with that number. They say this is what Warren's responsible for, this is what Westbrook Field's responsible for. It's based upon your enrollment, the number of students that come from Warren, the number of students that come from Westbrook Field. Last year it was fifty-eight, forty-two. There are more students from Warren attending our school district this year than Westbrook Field by one percent. So it switched from fifty-eight to forty-two to fifty-nine to forty-one.
So it's based on the student population. We just have more students going to the school, so therefore we pay more.
You pay more.
Because we have more going to the school, Izzy.
It's per pupil expenditure.
Um, so, transportation, you went up two percent.
Yep.
And because you took advantage of an extension.
Yes.
So next year, that extension goes away.
It does. We have to go out to bid next year.
Might get whacked next year, right?
We may or we may not. Um, you know, we'll go out to bid. Uh, we put a, there's a bidding process that I'm sure Financial Director Wagner could talk about. Um, but there's, it goes out to bid, um, in any company, so, just so that the board of selectmen know.
So there's only like three companies and nobody wants to go in anybody else's district?
Yeah, you know, sometimes it works that way, but I, what I will say to.
That's what it is.
Yeah, but I will say to the.
He's being dimpled now.
Yeah, but what I'll say to the school committee, uh, to the school, to commend the school committee again. When we first started doing our transportation bids, we did it by route. Then we did it by town, and then we did it for three years. When we did our last transportation bid, we put it out for a lot, which means every route in the district, and we put it out for a five-year bid. And the reason we did it for a five-year bid is because you can lease buses for five years. And that gives a bus company the opportunity to lease those buses for that five years, so that you could entice more people to come in and bid. Because if I'm a first student, I'm not gonna bid on the Reed Street, Reed Street run if I only have one run in your district. So we put the whole kit and caboodle out where before it would be broken into runs. So we've done lots of different creative things to try to entice people to bid on it, um, but this is where we're at. And we're gonna start that process again in the fall. Um, so in January, next year, we do have to go out to bid. Um, and there'll be more discussions around that, both at the building and budget subcommittee level and at the school committee level.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that does sound better. You, you bid out the whole thing for a longer period of time. It's more attractive.
That's what we tried, uh, but, you know, and we, and we ended, and that's okay. But I think a two-year sentence increase from last year to this year, uh, I think that we did pretty well with that.
Mr. Duff, can I add something?
Yes, please.
I think I scared you twice now, so a third time.
That's alright.
I'll do something. You know, one of the things that, when I started on the school committee, I found this very confusing, especially with transportation and stuff. So I'm just saying this because it helped me get along, so I don't know if people are listening, whatever, it might help out. When it comes to what we get reimbursed, it's only that first column, the regular transportation. So when it comes to that regional school district and why the state pays for us, that's it. That's why when we see the state aid over there, it's not the full amount. What we're really breaking down is a lot of that, like you said, uh, Mr. Frain, is that it's getting reimbursed. But it's the other transportation that we're still responsible for that typically is getting dispersed between the two towns. And that's where I think having that percentage where Mr. Duff is talking about makes a lot of sense because based on what we've seen the last few years, that's kinda been around where the average is. So that's where the, where we're comfortable in, in going from there. So I hope that helps a little bit.
So special, yeah, that's great. Special education, um, transportation is seven hundred seventy-one thousand. McKinney Vento, which is homeless transportation, um, when a student is deemed homeless, we have to transport that student from wherever they're living back to our district, uh, is thirty thousand, and the foster care is eight thousand. So the total assessments broke down to six forty-four and four forty-eight. Alright, contributing factors to the budget changes, these are things that we can't necessarily control. Uh, salaries, uh, went up three percent, which is three hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. Medicaid, uh, went from one seventy-five to one eighty-five, which was a two-point-eight percent increase. Transportation, uh, went from one four five nine to one four eight eight, which was that twenty-nine thousand we were just talking about, which was a two percent increase. Special education tuition, our, the students that we have to send out of district because we don't have the appropriate programming, uh, went up seven and a half percent. Uh, the govern, the state that has favored this year. Uh, last year they capped it at fourteen percent for private schools. So if you send a student to a private day school, the private day school's tuition could go up fourteen percent. This year they capped it at four point six percent to try to keep that in line with where things need to be because they understood the impact that it had on districts. Uh, so that helped us out a little bit. Insurance right now is at six point four percent, which is an increase of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. Special education transportation went down eight hundred, eight, eight thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars. Our fuel decrease is down fifty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars, and our electricity decrease is down eighty-three thousand, five hundred thirty dollars. So we had pros on the bottom and there was cons that drive you, I won't call them cons, but the factors that drive your budget, just as they are.
Could've worse, could've gone up on electricity and fuel.
Yeah, it could've, it could've got dinged on both ends. So it's not quite as, not quite as, uh, you know, there's pros and cons.
Yeah, yeah.
So those were our contributing factors to our budget changes this year. Alright, so for our summary, our Warren total operating assessment from last year to this year is up twenty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars, which is a point oh five percent increase. And our total operating assessment for Westbrook Field is eighty, uh, up eighty-one thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars, which is a one point six seven or one point seven six, one point seven six percent increase.
So overall, you're looking at a little over seven hundred thousand for above minimum contribution.
That's what we're looking for, it'd be point oh five percent above the tech.
We really appreciate you not coming in here with one point seven million dollars, two billion dollar above minimum because that's where we start, like, how are you coming up with that much? You know, you need to cut back some stuff because the town can't afford that. But you're, you're in, I appreciate the hard work you guys did and where we're at at this point. And, um, you, I, I can tell you that, that means a lot to me right off the bat because if you came in here and said, yep, I need one point seven million dollars again.
We're back. There are four positions added to the budget. There are four kindergarten paraprofessionals. Um, I can tell you that I've been asking for this since, uh, thirteen years ago.
We need them.
We do need them. Um, and for those of you who have kids in the district, your foundational reading skills start in kindergarten. And when kindergartners come to school, it's not the learning readiness piece. It's how do you get through the day piece where you're learning how to tie your shoes, eat your lunch, open your. shoes, eat your lunch, open your lunchbox. Unfortunately, we spend a lot of time, and the teacher spends a lot of time, on some of those tasks where I think that if we had paraprofessionals in our kindergarten classrooms, time on learning would increase by at least 25% because you're not teaching those daily living skills that five-year-olds, honestly, they just don't have it yet. So a lot of time in the beginning is spent on things that are teaching the kids how to be ready to learn versus coming in and actually learning. So those are the only four positions that are added to this budget. So when I say it's a shoestring budget, I truly mean it's a shoestring budget. I wouldn't, they came in with a wish list. I know that, you know, Jay was at the meetings, Barrett was at the meeting, I know Jay was there. What are your top priorities? And these were what the top priorities were, and we didn't go beyond that. Could I have gone beyond that or could we have gone beyond that? We absolutely could have. We could have talked about instructional coaches and more mental health counselors. We're hoping to get some more grant continuation grant funding to help offset that, but I don't think that four paraprofessionals for our most needy, vulnerable kids when it comes to learning is asking too much. There was an increase of just about $100,000 over what that net operating assessment was at. And I would ask the school committee, and I already talked to them about this on February 12th, I would ask them to move this budget forward because I think that this is as fiscally responsible as we can while maintaining an excellent educational setting for our kids that give back to our communities.
And I have to say kudos to the school in, under your leadership also. It's doing an outstanding job and, you know, I hear so many good things being said about the school. And, you know, of course, you're always going to have your naysayers, but we're always going to have to deal with that in life. Can't please 100% of the people 100% of the time, but you're doing a great job. And I like the fact that you guys are adding the EMT program in there because you're identifying a need that's coming up and you're approaching it from a school perspective where they can get trained and have a career when they leave school, which is awesome because it's been working amazing for the nursing program, you know, the firefighter program. It's, it's doing great and you're doing an awesome job and we appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. And honestly, I appreciate you guys not walking in here with a 1.5 million budget, above minimum contribution this time because it shows you guys that you did your work this time. And, you know, the past is the past.
Well, and you know, like we said at the last time, was this is a new beginning moving forward. I told you that we would be as transparent and as fiscally responsible as we could be. I can tell you that we have put our best foot forward on this. I know Jay will attest to that. I think Ray sat in quite a few meetings and there's hard discussions that are had, but we need to make sure that we're educating our kids and making sure that they have opportunities. Our teachers are doing a phenomenal job. Our kids are, I'll tell you, out of this world, we have great kids, we're lucky, but we still have to be responsible to the towns. And I think that, you know, I think this was as good as we could do by not adding anything other than the paraprofessionals, which I think if you look at every district in Massachusetts, everybody has paraprofessionals in kindergarten except for Quaybog. I don't think that's a huge ask, but it's something that we have to ask for.
Now, I have to tell you, our ultimate goal is to get to zero above minimum contribution. We would love that someday because I could probably run up there and give you a hug if you ever came in here and said, "How do you get zero above minimum contribution?" We'd be very happy with that, but we understand you're working within constraints too, so...
And our goal is to be at zero above minimum contribution as well. I got very excited when we did our preliminary numbers, it was like 1.4%. I, "Yeah!" And I was like, "Oh, no!" Because we have to, you know, being fiscally responsible also means, you know, being conservative a little bit with the transportation. The town won't get that back at the end of the year if it, you know, if you get more reimbursement than what we're budgeting for. But like I said, I don't want to come in low and then have to ask the town for money at the end of the day because it's, we're all working together and I know that, you know, the police, the highway, the fire department all have asked and we're all trying to be as responsible as we can.
Can I just add something, if you guys don't mind, from a budget perspective, from a committee perspective? We've all been talking about, you know, the above minimum and that's definitely the goal we're always trying to get to, where we're going to. But the way we were looking at it too is that typically you see the above goes up and the overall numbers going way up too, right? It's kind of like in parallel. And one thing that we're seeing this year is that I think the trend's starting to go the right way. The big number is that, right? Maybe you saw the number from the above minimum, that 100,000 different because of the way it breaks down, but the overall number is only $21,000 more. We're not looking at, you know, 100, $200,000 more. I mean, there's a scenario where you could have exactly the same number, but the above minimum might be 400,000, but the transportation might be more because we're spending more there, you know, that type of thing. So I just want to say is that I think we're trending in the right way, which is a good thing from what we had in the past.
Just keep on going down.
Right. And then realistically, like, how many other departments are coming in with less than, you know, a whole percent increase total?
Hard to do, yeah.
So that's, that's just kind of what we're saying is that at least we feel like we're seeing the data that's showing that we're doing something, getting us to that goal that's going to take probably a multi-year thing to get there.
So we're working towards it, we all understand. And it's good that we're all on the same path, I think, this time.
Yep.
And we're heading towards making sure that we're being fiscally responsible because we all pay taxes in this town. It, well, you know, right?
But I care.
You do care, all right? So we all pay and, you know, taxes, it's getting tough for everybody. And we want to make it, we want to make Warren as good as possible for our schools, which you're doing, but also make it affordable for people that still live here, you know?
And what I would say is we want to make Warren as good for its residents as well. The schools are part of the residents, and I know that, you know, we want to make the schools good, but the schools are good for our community. And I, you know, I know that you understand that, but I don't want to miss the mark on that. We're servicing, you know, 1,200 kids, not all from, you do the 5941 split, but those kids are part of our community and they have, they're coming out of Quaybog with work readiness, with college readiness, and we have over 50% of our staff that actually attend Quaybog that are our teachers. So that speaks volumes about Warren and Westbrook Field, which is outstanding.
You're putting up the numbers for education too because when you're actually, you're testing, you're not like getting like two people past the MCAS for spelling in the entire school district. It's not a situation like that. You're doing really well as far as the numbers. So, you know, if we were paying this kind of money and then we only had two people that were up to, you know, reading level, it's like, all right, you guys aren't doing your job at this point, but that's not the case.
It's not the case, and that's a credit to our teachers. On the last slide real quick, Richard, if you don't mind. So we presented February 15th to Westbrook Field tonight, February 22nd to the town of Warren. February 13th through March 18th, we are available for any question and answer kind of things that we had when we first started this. I told you, our goal was to get you the budget a month in advance. So if you did have questions about it, we're happy to come back and answer those. You know, I'm happy to come back to another, so like board meeting if you guys have further questions on that. On March 18th, I'm going to ask the school committee to vote on the budget. I'm going to recommend we vote on the budget that is our preliminary budget. Once again, they have a choice whether they vote on that or they deduct the four paraprofessionals from it. It's going to be my recommendation that we move forward with those four paraprofessionals. On March 19th, we'll certify our budget and we'll send it to the appropriate boards. The treasurer will certify the budget and we'll move it towards our appropriate, towards the appropriate boards and both Westbrook Field and Warren. Our goal, and I said this in Westbrook Field, our goal is to go into a town meeting and if possible, be united on where we stand with this, or at least have an idea of where we're headed in that direction. You know, I think like David you said, we don't want to have a repeat of last year, we want to have a unified front or be able to understand where each one of us stand moving into this process because I think it's important for the towns to understand that, you know, we recognize the fire, the police, the board of selectmen. We're doing our best job to make sure that we keep our local assessments and taxes down, but I would just like to have clarity as we move forward, you know, after we get past March 18th or 19th, who the voters, just what are we doing going into town meeting so that everybody is on the same page, whether we agree or disagree, just that we know that we're on the same page of whether we agree or disagree, I guess.
I think we could have consensus at that point or an idea. You got to remember, our town meeting's not until June because we pushed it back to help you guys out.
Yeah, well, and these numbers may be, these numbers may be more favorable when you get into April, particularly May, because we're going to have true numbers because we'll have the house budget by then and then it'll get approved. My guess is regional, the minimum aid might go up a little bit, which is going to be a $30,000 difference, which will help to offset some of that local assessment. So that's going to...
The best cases and scenarios, that will go down by about 100,000.
Yeah, that would be my guess. But once again, out of transparency, this is what we have for numbers right now, and I'm hoping it's better. That's what our goal is all the time, is that we're hoping that the budget gets better.
And I'm hoping a billionaire moves to town and writes a check to the school and says, "Here you go."
Writes it to the town and then we can continue to expand and look at future potentials.
You have any questions, sir?
So the March 18th meeting.
Yep.
Can there be any snags? Could the school board itself say, "Oh, we're going to, you know, we want to do this thing for another 100,000 and this thing for 250,000." Or does that generally, because the budget committee has already done it, you've done it, and you come to them with this package, they say, "Okay." You know, they have questions, but...
So what I presented to the school committee and what we recommended going from the budget subcommittee was that this is the budget that gets put forward. I'm not looking to increase this budget. Would I love to increase it, I absolutely would. Do I think we need to? I think that we do. But in all, in good faith to the town, this is what we're going in with, and it would be my recommendation to the school committee that they move this budget forward. I don't, I do not foresee there any increases in this budget because we've worked really, really hard over several nights to come up with a budget that was fiscally responsible. And it's been the recommendation of the budget subcommittee as well as finance director Wagner that this is the budget that we put forward. I would, that my job, that this budget does not move any higher than where it is now.
Don't do that, we need you.
No, it's okay. Because once again, because the, honestly, the school committee wants to be as financially, and they have been as financially responsible as they possibly can be. We've been through every single line item in the budget to get where we are. So I don't, I don't see this budget moving.
And to answer your question too, that's kind of what Mr. Duff and the budget subcommittee talked about, why we're doing this concept. In the past, the full school committee only had about a week to digest this, right? They got told on a Monday, the next Monday they voted on it, and then it was there. And that did bring in some unknowns at times, right? Where, you know, there've been years where is it A, B, C, or D, and which one you're going with, blah, blah, blah. What we're hoping for is being very precise, being very descriptive on why we're doing this, this is why, why we're pushing this one forward and giving the months so that there's some time to think about. If you do have questions, we can talk through it, we can have that. We have another budget meeting prior to that meeting as well to go over any questions of other people that, if you yourselves have questions or other members of the school committee have members, questions we can answer there. So that way, everyone has all the clarity they need so that, all those are questions, there's none unknowns when we vote on the 18th.
And that, that helps a lot. We really appreciate that. The transparency has been helping a lot and the fact that you've been coming forward and, you know, meeting with us and explaining the status of the school, that, that's really appreciated because it builds that cooperation. We understand what's going on. There's no, you know, behind closed doors or anything, it's very transparent and letting us know what's happening and...
I appreciate the opportunity to do, it helps.
Yep. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, the only other comment I want to make, I'm really impressed with stuff like the energy savings, right? Because I don't know that that's been looked at in the past. I mean, it's, it's sort of simple. I mean, you got to do the work, get the grants, you know, do the equipment changes and all that stuff, but you can see it, it makes a big impact. So less oil, less electricity, when all that stuff is going up. And that's huge. And maybe this is like the initial impact, you know, next year it might be even better.
I would expect on fuel for it to be even better next year. I would expect electricity would be, electricity, we're really going to see the savings unfortunately in five years. We saw it because kilowatts per hour went down, but when we get to the end of the 100% on-bill repayment.
Right.
It's going to, you know, you're saving, truly saving the 100,000 kilowatts per hour.
Yep.
Where right now, we're probably going to see a savings of probably 20,000 kilowatts per hour because of the project and the on-bill repayment pays for the project itself. So it's, I don't want to call it free, but it's great.
Yeah.
You know, and to be able to get those grants, huge credit to Marcus Rell and Hennel and Smola for putting the district in a position which ultimately helps the town. The other thing that I was interested in, town administrator Ferrero was with us when we met with the DOE R person. There are opportunities for the town to pursue a grant and for the school to pursue a grant at the same time for the same thing, which means that you could potentially get double revenue for that, which would help out, and that's things that we'll talk about as well. So the more we get acquainted with these people, you know, I think the better off we're going to be in terms of energy efficiency, not just at the school, but I know that things are happening around the town as well.
Yeah, we're hoping to open up much more grant opportunities with the stuff that we're doing because we've been working with the EDA on grants, doing the master plan over there and doing the townwide master plan. So there's a lot that's going to be happening to help open up more opportunities, and we're hoping that helps out the school too with the opportunities, so...
We all work together.
We got a lot, we got a lot to do in the next few years.
Yep, that's good though. We have to move forward, you know, and I think that this, tonight's a step in moving forward and then seeing where we end up.
And I think that schools move forward and towns moving forward, we've seen leaps and bounds for police department, fire department, school, everybody's getting things done now. And it's starting to, there was that rough patch for a while where we're trying to get things to work together, and now it's, it's paying off.
Yep, no, I think we're in a much better position this year than we were last year. You know, once again, thank you for allowing me and finance director Wagner to come, you know, on a regular basis to the meetings. I think it's important that this select board and the town understands the things that the school is doing for, for the community as well as for the students that we service. So we appreciate that opportunity.
Appreciate that. Do you have any more questions?
No. Do you have anything to say?
No, I just say, what a difference a year makes, right? It's really a night and day and thanks Steve and all the team over at Quaybog for all the information. I thought it was a great presentation.
Thank you, Jim, I appreciate it and thank you for your support.
Anybody from the public have any questions? Mr. Conrad?
Joe Conrad, before the help. I noticed the increase was only 21,664. That would be equal to a teenager making 15 bucks an hour for a 30-hour week. That is reasonable.
Thank you, Joe. I agree.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom have any questions? Superintendent Duff? Anybody have any questions on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. We do vote on the...
It was a pleasure this time.
It's always a pleasure, though. We said at the beginning, you know, let's talk about positive things. The budget doesn't have to be negative, it can be a positive thing. And I think that we see when we work together how we keep that things done.
Absolutely. Let's keep it up.
Yeah, that's our goal. All right, guys, have a great night. Thank you.
I am military.
Oh, is it different?
Number's much different? All right, so let's get to Chief here. Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion on the possible appointments of the following individuals to serve as police officers, starting at step two on the patrol pay scale. Anticipated vote. How you doing, chief?
Very well, yourself?
It's about time, we got some more guys coming on here.
So first of all, Patrick couldn't make it today, they had a family vacation in Florida. So Patrick Joliski, he's coming to us with 20 years military experience and four years full-time experience from between Barry and Petersham Police Department. I will bring him in front of you physically next week so he can introduce himself and you can see him.
Okay.
Then in front of you today, we have Brian Fister. Brian also has military experience, National Guard, National Guard. Uh, he worked at the Chicken P Police Department, Special, and full-time police officer at Holyoke Police. And he's coming to us from Holyoke Police Department. So, uh, both have academies, both have experience, so that's why I'm asking the board to start both out off at a step two.
Okay.
And.
Any other specialized training?
I have crisis intervention, uh, train, so, that, just did that in December.
Patrick has.
National Guard.
Flumbravo, temperature.
Okay.
That's smart enough.
Patrick has firearms experience, um, yeah, gentleman. He was a recruiter, a squad leader, an infantry, a civil affairs sergeant, and an infantry.
What branch?
Army, United States Army. Oh, hold it, yes, sir.
And where's he, where's he coming from?
He's coming from Barry and Petersham.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and do Patrick in addition, even though he's not here?
Yes, if you could, and that.
Okay. And then we'll meet him next.
Then you meet him.
Do you have anything you would like to say to the board before we start?
I know, that's, that's pretty much all my background right there.
All right, and who's the young lady over there?
White and dark.
Ah, nice meeting you.
Hi, nice to meet you.
What's your name?
Erin.
Erin?
And this is Charlotte.
Hi, Charlotte. She's adorable.
She's a school teacher, if you wanna try and steal her.
Charlotte?
In West Hartford, Connecticut.
Stop recruiting, where are you recruiting?
We're in Holyoke, but. It's a drive.
Yep, okay, so I'll make a mo, uh, two, two separate motions, right?
Yep.
All right, make a motion to appoint Patrick Kalipski, Kalipski, to serve as a police officer, starting at step two for a one-year term.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to appoint Brian Fister.
Yes, sir.
Yep. To serve as a police officer, starting at step two for a one-year term.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. You're appointed, sir, congratulations.
Hey, congratulations, brother. Nice to see you.
I got a cold, so I'm just gonna give you a fist bump here.
But only all that cold, guys? Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know when it is, and you got the little one, so I don't wanna break.
Would you like to grab a picture?
Sure. Maybe we can get to, get a picture, if I understand.
Absolutely. Let me sign here.
Just to make it official.
Yeah, right.
All right, I'm gonna stand over here, then.
No, I'm gonna cough one, too. Mom, come on in.
I didn't know if you wanted a one without me first.
Come on in.
Jimmy, wanna hop in? I'll be perpetually in your phone.
Oh.
No topic.
No, no, I know. It's A T and T, it doesn't matter. Welcome aboard, Steve Duff, I'm the superintendent of schools.
Next, Pete, I'm sure I'll see you.
Look forward to working with you, absolutely.
I'll be around.
Always a pleasure, myself.
Yeah, right.
It's good. You're a great guy.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you all.
I sent you the number.
Go. Did you have to pass anything?
I'll take those. Yeah.
You're gonna get them sworn in, I make sure they sign, yep.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Next on the agenda, review and possible vote on a proposed change to the special traffic constable policy, anticipated vote. So what's the change, Chief?
So the only change we have on this is in, the second page?
Second page.
Second page, um.
Section three.
Section three, versus, um, the one that was presented in, in front of you last time, it said Warren Full Time Fire Department Personnel. Um, and the chief of O B asked us if we could modify it to say Warren Fire Department Personnel.
So just anybody in the, okay.
Uh, what do you think about that?
Guess I don't have a problem with it. Um, what would be the?
Yeah, what's the advantage of that? Uh, there'd be more people pool for it, um, and the people that would be eligible for it would have, they direct traffic around their trucks anyways, that scene, so, um, they'd have the experience to do it. Uh, it just limited it last time by saying full-time personnel.
They just don't wanna be stealing from the fire department for shifts that they can fill, to fill traffic details, you know, when they could be filling a fire detail. So there is a, uh,
I think you still have to get approval.
They have the rule from the fire chief. So the, and the fire chief has the ability to remove any fire personnel from any traffic duties at any time.
Yeah, it's up to the fire chief to manage it and make sure, and I don't think he's gonna short himself. Right?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I, I don't see real issue with it, I just don't wanna be stealing from Adam to put a guy out there for a traffic detail, when he could be working, working a truck, or working an ambulance or something.
Right, so that's, any.
This is actually better than, because this would only be, before it was only full-time.
Right.
Now he can pick between full and part, right? So it probably would give him more flexibility, I think.
And those part-time guys, they don't do a full-time shift at the station thing, that I know of.
No. What do you think about this?
Um, it's totally up to the board, I mean, um, it does give the, the, the chief the ability to, um, you, you know, deny somebody if they, if they really need somebody to, uh, to cover a shift. Um, you know, uh, one thing that, you know, that was talked about during this proposal is that, you know, if somebody was to get hurt on, on, you know, as, as one of these traffic constables, um, you know, there would, you know, there would be potential oddages in terms of, you know, you know, covering that, you know, that position. So, um, you know, if a, if a fire person, um, you know, potentially gets hurt out there, and they would be out of, of, you know, of, of work for their normal job, if their normal job is a full-time firefighter, or a, you know, part-time firefighter, that, they would be taken out of the pool for, for, you know, filling a shift.
Maybe that's.
Um, I'm, I'm okay with it, I think it gives them more flexibility. I think before, if he could only send full-time people, then he's at a disadvantage. This way he can.
If we're gonna allow firefighters, we might as well allow as many as possible.
Yeah, plus if he really needs the full-time people, or he wants to sort of keep them in reserve, he can send the part-time to do this kind of thing.
All right. You can answer me.
Ready for a motion?
Did you have anything else, Chief?
Nope, that was it, just that one change.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the change to the special traffic constable party. Well, hold on, are we just gonna accept the policy? Are we gonna only accept the change?
Yeah, as amended.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the special traffic constable policy as discussed and amended.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Review, review the renewal proposal for the, for health benefits with Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, um, M I A, for fiscal year twen, um, two thousand twenty-five, with possible acceptance of new rates, anticipated vote. Okay, Mr. Ferraro, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, um, uh, myself and Treasurer Swistak, uh, met with, uh, uh, M I A, uh, last week uh, to go over the, um, the health insurance benefits renewal trust, um, that the town is with, uh, M I A for health insurance. Um, and the, um, at the annual conference, it, it was, uh, announced that, you know, towns could be anywhere between, um, two and a quarter percent increase to all the way up to a potential ten percent increase. Um, we're, we're pleased to report that, um, for health insurance, uh, the premium change for the town of Warren is only three point two-six percent.
It's really good.
So, uh, we, we're on the lower end of the spectrum, um, and that's for, um, the health insurance. There is no increase for, um, dental or vision.
Wow, really?
So this would be, uh, authorizing the, uh, treasurer to accept the rates and to continue, uh, with, uh, the renewal. And our, our plan renews, uh, September first, and it goes through August thirty-first. So that's our renewal. Our renewal for dental and vision goes, uh, for, uh, each fiscal year. So it's a little bit different of a renewal, um, but.
Not much of a say, I mean, it is what it is.
Right.
We didn't get dinged that bad, though.
Yep.
No, we didn't, I mean, it could've been a lot worse.
Yeah.
So these numbers have been updated, um, in the, um, in the budget as well, and been provided to FinCon. So they have the new updated budget.
Okay.
All right, do you have any more questions or anything?
No. Okay, so a motion? Make a motion to allow the treasurer to sign off on behalf of the town for the M I A fiscal year twenty-five health benefits.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion and sign the memorandum of understanding between the town and Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, anticipated vote.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just an, an M O U, a memorandum of understanding, uh, between the town and its planning partners, uh, C M R P C, for its, um, development and support for the, uh, Community Development, uh, C D B G, um, fund, um, application on behalf of the town. Um, and so this is a, um, this is just a memorandum stating that, uh, the town and C M R P C will be working together, uh, to develop, uh, the application. Um, and, and, and the town will be sharing the information with C M R P C, and will be working with C M R P C, uh, to move forward with the F Y twenty-four application.
Okay, very good. Just make sure when you do it, you authorize me to sign.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Yeah, you got any questions?
No. Make a motion to sign the memorandum of understanding with Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, and allow the chairman to sign.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Update from the Board of Health on twenty-four North Street and twenty-seven North Street. Sir, you're up. Good news, right?
I'll let you give the deciding factor on that. Answer a couple of health, um, update for twenty-four North Street.
Okay.
I had an email today from them, um, basically it's at a standstill right now. I had to stop all the forward motion, because we didn't have licensed contractors and work on permits. So, they terminated.
Which they were told to do.
Correct. He's been shuffling around, trying to get new contractors in there, getting turned down right and left on contractors.
Turned down?
Turned down, because they are loaded up with work, they don't have availability.
Okay.
This is considered, you, most contractors want new work, a commercial, where the money is.
Yeah.
This is.
Rehab.
Yes. Nobody wants to do it unless they have to.
Right.
And nobody wants to do it in the, for a health direction.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure whether this is all, um, transparent enough for me. I kinda think that there's a game being played here, just to extend time, so he can try and help the place. He was notified that he is gonna be fine going back to the end date of our original two-week grace period. Uh, and that is going forward. Uh, my last email with him today was, well, he talked to one guy, but that guy said, nope, I can't do it in this timeframe, but maybe check back in four or five months, and I might be able to do it then. And then he extended it to us, to kick it up to us, to say, if we know of anybody, he'll gladly take our recommendations. That's not my job.
Not our job. And then if something happens, because we recommend them, they're, it's not our business.
So right now, it's at a standstill, tenants will know that it's at a standstill. There's one apartment in that building, right now, that lady needs to really get out of it, to get, the, the whole thing has to be recovered. And she should be moved into another apartment at that point in time.
Okay.
I still haven't been able to get into the other apartments as of yet.
You did tell us he was gonna let you in there.
That hasn't happened yet.
Tried to make arrangements with him on a date?
I tried contacting him to get him out here, he doesn't come out here, he's in Boston. So.
Or get somebody that can open him up?
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, you should have a property manager that comes to check.
Well, that property manager was Roush, and Roush is no longer in the picture.
Then it's up to him.
Where the keys went to, I don't know. Or who has the keys, I don't know. So, that's where that sits right now, it's still limbo right now, um, and the fines are just gonna continue to add up. Um, I did do some research, like I told you I would. And in order to keep this legal and above boards, we can't charge him five hundred dollars a day, it's gonna be three hundred. That way there, it's not a criminal offense, and we're apt to be able to take it to housing court that way. If we go above that.
What's five hundred does per apartment, right?
Per apartment, yeah.
So you charge him three hundred per apartment?
Three hundred per apartment per day.
Still a stiff five, you know?
That still gets us to where we need to be with housing court. But if we go the other way, anywhere from three to five thou, uh, but three to, three to, three, three hundred to one thousand dollars is the cap on it. Uh, and that gives us, um, a lot more responsibility on our part, because now we're, we're getting into a criminal offense area. Um, and the town has to stop proving this, proving that, proving everything else. So we're better off to keep it on the other side of the non-criminal stretch.
Well, the fines are up to the Board of Health.
And let the court appoint it.
The fines are up to the Board of Health, right, and?
The fines are up to the state.
Up to, up to five hundred dollars, right?
Up to five hundred dollars.
Right.
But the state says you can go to a thousand, and it's criminal. So you can't go beyond a thousand.
Per day, per apartment.
Per apartment, per day.
Still a lot of money.
It is, and that's where we're, we're gonna stick with right now.
Thirty-six hundred dollars a day. It's three hundred dollars per apartment.
Well, you're looking at six apartments in that one building.
Oh, wait, six.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred dollars, a double, yeah. Eighteen hundred dollars, still eighteen hundred dollars a day. And you're looking at how many, it's been three weeks, four weeks now?
Four weeks now.
So heads up?
So, right now, we're, we're gonna go with the, the lesser of the two evils, um, because it can be kicked too, and I have to get, we're gonna have to notify, um, housing court to make sure they're up to date on that code. Uh, make sure they're aware of what's going on.
Okay.
So, um, if we don't, we go in blind, we don't stand a small chance of tired.
Okay.
So.
So, right now, you're at a standstill with that one, until it gets somebody in here, and he's not.
So what about the thing of having to ha, um, So what about the thing of having to ha-, um, move the residents out and pay for their, um, housing?
If we wanna condemn, we can condemn, but it has to go through court to condemn.
Oh, and if that's, at that point, you would have to, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's getting to a point where.
What, what we're gonna be, end up doing now is invoking legal on our side, um, to move the ball through court. So we would initially kick it to housing court. Housing court would then kick it to, their terminology is the Supreme State Supreme Court.
So why would we go right there? Would we just stay in housing?
No, because if he's not paying, they give him a chance to, to, to take care of it. But if he doesn't take care of it, then it gets kicked to.
Yeah, they'll issue an enforcement order on it.
And then they'll kick it to, uh, Supreme Court.
So we gotta give him a chance to try to.
Well, we've given him all the chances of him to give, we've given him all the options.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven North Street was in good standing for a little while. I got a call last week, actually, I was at Twenty-Four North and she came running out to grab me. With problems on their, their, uh, their, um, property over here. She's on the second floor. I did pull the taxes. There was taxes owed on that. And I have.
Lily owed three thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Brand total of three thousand five ninety-one sixty-nine, or fifty-nine.
But that's without fees.
Yeah, that's without fees. They owe three quarters.
Yeah. Is that, that's a different landlord, right?
Yes, and we're gonna. We originally got involved with this house. We sent him a, um, correction order. It never made it to him. It came back to us. He never picked it up, so it came back.
Okay.
Okay. Um, she did have him in court. And the judge did order him to do certain things. Um, and his response to her was, he's only gonna do what the judge tells him to do, and that's it. Originally, it was a heat issue and a electric issue. They had no heat nor electricity. Now they have heat and electricity, um, and I don't know if they pulled the permit or not to do it.
So that's easy enough to figure out?
Yeah. So, um, they're at the point right now where there's a rodent infestation. There's still plumbing issues in the house.
They have water?
They have water.
Okay.
They have plumbing issues, um, which kicks it up why I brought it in. Okay, this is a citation that I posted that, that's going out to them. Um, again, we're going back with the no posting in common areas and there's pictures that show after this. There is a posting in the main hallway, but it's for the original owner of the house. He has no information in that house whatsoever. So, um. I gave him seven days to post. Okay. Um, broken windows, glass in the bedroom. The window is not, um, considered weather tight because it's broken. Um, gave him seven days to fix that.
Are there kids in this house?
There are.
Ages?
Um, twelve and up.
Are there any elderly? Or just any?
Not in that apartment. Down on the first floor apartment, yes, which I haven't gotten into yet.
How many apartments?
Um, technically, the house is set up for two, but there's three illegal.
Oh.
So it's not a legal three family. Okay. Hot water temperature in the shower is not controlled. Uh, if they turn on the water down on the first floor and someone's in the shower in, on the second floor, she gets scalded.
Nice. So that's separate lines?
Yeah.
No, the, the utilities for the first and second floor, they share everything.
You can't do that?
Yeah. Um, another issue, uh, when you go to turn a water on in the bathtub, the, the, the cold water is, is frozen. You really gotta get a wrench on it to turn it, uh, so the valve is screwed up. Okay. Um, ceiling has cracks in it in the bathroom. It's allowing all the moisture to go up and get, um, it's plaster ceiling, which is fine, but the moisture getting up to it is allowing the moisture to build up inside the plaster and causing it to fall.
Is this in the bathroom or?
Bathroom.
Is there a fan?
There's a, a fan and a window in the bathroom, yes.
Okay. Does the fan work, I guess, is the next question, right? It may not even.
No.
Yeah.
Leaking sink drain in the kitchen sink. You open up the sink drain and the trap is leaking all over the bottom part of the cabinet, rotten out the bottom of the cabinet. Uh, rat rod infestation throughout the building. Monthly rat rod inspections of each unit, um, not being done and there's no documentation of any inspections in the house. Um, she told me that they, we did send over a working person. She came, they came once and they gave her a bunch of traps to put up. That is not legal. The, the company is supposed to install the traps and maintain the traps and come back and check them and suppose of.
Yeah.
Et cetera. So, um, they were, this is going out probably tomorrow, uh, Monday in the mail. Um, certified to the owner. I had a different address for him this time, so we'll try and get him that address, uh, and see where it goes.
Next.
Yep. Okay, this is the original hour inspection report that we sent out to them. I just typed it up on the other phone. It's an official phone and then it just goes. Again. Okay. This is what's in the hall. This is the old owner's info. That's not valid. It doesn't cut it. Uh, and the regulation does say it does have to be on a twenty-inch by twenty-inch paper, nothing smaller. Rodents chewing through the baseboards. You can see the holes here. Um, she did, she was supposed to send me a picture. She showed me a picture of a rodent that she found in her apartment that was dead. And it is not a mouse. It is a gnawing rat. Okay? So there are rats. What they did was they took spray foam and lined the wall with spray foam. And you can see they're still chewing right through it all.
The rats eat right through spray foam. They use it for bedding.
Yeah, and you'll see there's bedding already made up for it.
Yeah.
Um, there are cabinets in the pantry, dragging food around the house.
Is that a mousetrap?
That is a mousetrap.
A rat.
Which will not pick up a rat.
No.
Okay. You can see how they're getting up into the drapes and everything and chewing the crap out of the drapes.
Do these people have cats at all?
No, they have dogs, but no dogs. I mean, dogs, no cats. That's indicative of a rat. It measures one inch long and it's tapered on both ends. And that is a definite insignia of a gnawing rat.
And is that on a cushion?
That is on the sofa.
So a rat was just hanging out right there on the sofa?
Yep. And there's more throughout the house.
Bless you.
Okay.
Is that your technical term too? Ratched?
Yep. Uh, rodent damage. You can see again, dragging food to the hole so they can take it up to wherever. Right? Over again. A hole, baseboard, all the foam that's, they're chewing through all over again.
That piece of the wall sitting there?
Yes, right here.
Yeah, where is that?
Those are, that's in the living room, uh, on the back wall facing, we had to pull the sofa actually away from the wall.
Okay.
So. Those are, I think they're pop tarts or whatever, something like that, that they dragged out of the pantry. And again, you can see, you know, they're.
They're eating well?
Yeah, they're eating well. They're, they're, they're a good size. I told her to send me the photo, but she didn't send it.
Well, gnawing, gnawing rats get pretty big.
Yeah, I know.
Well, those are pop tarts, huh?
Yeah, so you can see the spray foam is just, it's, it's useless.
Yeah, you just pull that right into the hole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, over again. Okay, more turds. This is in the kitchen behind the refrigerator. And you can see, it's just plank floors. There is no floor covering of any sort.
That's a subfloor?
That's a subfloor, but you can't cite him on a subfloor. It says it's okay. So I can't ding him on the, on the rodents. Here you can see the rodents in the kitchen starting to chew on the, the baseboard.
Does that expose electrical water?
That is a, uh, the cord for, um, the refrigerator.
Okay.
This is underneath the stove, the kitchen stove, mousetrap in the back. That trap actually got dragged from there across the kitchen behind the refrigerator. I have rat.
So the rat did go for the bait, but then it just.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not gonna have enough power to kill a rat.
Just make them aggravated.
Here you can see the nesting in the runners of stove.
Yeah. Which, um, at that point, I would probably bring Chief Lavoy into that. Is he in, into that? Because at that point, it becomes a fire hazard if you've got rodents going and then tearing apart the inside of the stove or building nests in the stove.
I haven't brought him in yet. This is just, comes over the other.
Cause that could start a fire underneath the stove if they use it.
It can. This, this pretty much looks like the insulation they're dragging it out and ripping out of it.
But they're, they're nesting under there or using it to nest.
Yep.
So whatever else they're bringing to put under there too.
And then if you go down to the basement, the basement is not secure at all. It's open to the outside. It's a dirt floor. Um, there are doors there, but the doors are all rotted wood and everything, so anything can get into that.
Yeah.
Um, the basement floods. She says she's had like three feet of water in there at a time. There's a sump pump in there, but the water just flows in and flows out.
Off the street or something?
Yeah, there's a paved parking lot or something in the back of the yard. There's nothing but dirt. So there's no real capturing of any water or anything.
Yeah.
Sink trap here leaks into the basement. Here's another place where the rats keep coming up through behind the sink. You can't see the water flow here, but it's very low pressure. Like I says, when you turn it on in another apartment, there's really a trickle just coming out. And the hot water valve does not, I mean, the cold water valve can barely turn that thing on at all. So when you're in the shower, if the water does come, turn hot, you can adjust the cold water to cool it down. So it's an issue.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah. So this guy, I think, is gonna be a problem. Just because now she's been holding her rent. He took her to court. He's trying to get the rent from her, um, or the back rent from her, saying that everything's complete. The reason why she wanted me over there was to go through it again, understand to identify any issues so that she could provide something to her lawyer to offset him getting any more money. Which I can see that. I can understand that.
Yeah. I wouldn't mull that debt.
No.
Well, it's a house that Jack built. You walk in, the floor is like this. So, building itself is, again, it's a three family. It's an actual two-family.
So they get an unpermitted apartment?
Unpermitted apartment up into the attic. Yeah.
So how do you deal with that building?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they'll go in and tell them, get, is it occupied?
Occupied.
Kids?
I don't know on the second floor, but the first floor, there are kids.
Okay, but the third floor?
Second, the third floor, I, I don't know. Second floor, there's, yeah, there, yeah, twelve and up.
Okay.
But the third floor, I'm not sure. So, um, the house itself is not in good shape. There's ain't even none around that street.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be an issue with that landlord. First run around with him. I didn't have success for it, but she had taken him to court and the judge ordered him to do the electric heat, um, to fix the, uh, um, for the, didn't have electricity because he didn't pay the bill. So what they did was, because they're on a shared meter, he pays the electricity. They pay him and he's supposed to pay the electric bill. Or the electric got shut off for the first and second floor because he wasn't paying the electric up, but he was collecting the money. Correct.
Nice.
So, and at that point in time, they had the Asphorus in the basement that split in two. And he refused to fix the, the heating house. So that's why she ended up taking him to court.
Well, the, the utilities are supposed to be separate per apartment.
Per apart.
Right.
But they're not. The only one that's separate.
Technically a one-family house then.
The only one that's separate is the third floor. Originally was a one-family house.
But if it's, if the third floor is an unpermitted addition, doesn't really matter anyways.
Doesn't. But it was, it was, you know, when, to support her, when he wasn't paying the electric, first floor and second floor had no electricity. They had no heat. Third floor had electricity and they had heat. They're on a separate meter. And the heat up there.
So the other one that was probably done right was the third floor.
The heat up there is electric, right? It wasn't gas, where the first floor and second floor were gas. So now they put in, geez, four baseboard heaters in the second floor.
And who's the owner of this property?
The name is Michael Sanchez.
Where's he at?
Said East Long Meadow, right?
Yeah, East Long Meadow. But he's got a business name and I can't remember what that is.
Give him the time and then we can stop fighting him.
Yep. I think we're gonna end up going to court on this one because he's gonna fight it.
Fight?
So, yeah.
And again, tired of slumwads.
I'm tired of that whole street.
Don't want slumwads in the town. We gotta let them know that. They're not gonna be appreciated here.
It's just, just one house out there, another one you know.
Yeah.
So that's it for the two properties out there.
Okay, so you're handling that one with an enforcement order. You're giving seven days on that order.
I'm giving seven days on all of those issues.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the rats is, is, is an issue itself. You can.
The rats are gonna take time, especially if they're in that much and they're eating well. They probably have a stockpile of food in there so they're not gonna touch poison.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure.
And you're gonna have to use snap traps to get them out of there. And rats are very small.
Actually, there is something that works better.
The bucket traps?
No.
In front?
Take a, um, what's it, a cup of, um, sugar, regular household sugar. And you take a cup of either plaster Paris. And you put it on, on like a paper plate and you put it where you know the rats are coming in. And they eat that thing up because of the sugar. When the plaster Paris gets into the system, plaster Paris and water, it solidifies. And they cannot vacate or, or.
The worst case of constipation ever.
Well, they won't be pooping no more.
No turds.
No turds on the continent. And the other one is baking soda.
Which blows them up.
Right, because they cannot pass gas.
Ah.
So it's like a little bomb. But they, it does work though. But that needs to be for them because he's renting that out. It's gotta be done by a professional. It can't be the tenant doing it.
Right. Um, we, we should, at this point, like, we'll work the building commissioner thing.
Yeah, let's do all guns blaring on this, right?
At, at a point, we're gonna have to hit that with the building commissioner.
Well, I would like to see, you know, and I made reference on. Well, I would like to see, you know, and I made reference on a report to electrical plumbing and building. Because they all need to be getting over, you know.
Right.
I don't know if the electricals run right or not, for the electric heaters.
Well, we would know by permits, if they pulled permits, if there was unpermitted work. Well, if there was unpermitted work going in that apartment, they have an apartment, a third apartment, and there's no permits.
You can shut it down.
Yeah.
But even the, the, the electrical heat that they installed in the second floor, I don't know if they pulled permits for that either. So, because that was court ordered, that wasn't through us. So I don't know if, I'm, I'm assuming they did not pull permits.
Well, we could stop letting this guy know too. And if he doesn't respond back into your, your thing in seven days.
The first one, they did not, we sent it to the address that we had for him and it came back unclaimed.
It's probably just not, he sees something coming from Board of Health in the town of Warren, he's like, ah.
Yeah, it could be.
I ain't signing for that.
So.
I mean, minimally, the court would have his address, right? He's already.
Yes. And I, that's where I got this new address, I got it from her.
Okay.
So that's the address that she has to contact him right now.
So for, let's try this.
Lawyer has. So I gave her a copy of this report, it says, I'm gonna mail it, certify. But if I can't get it to him, here's a copy, you have a lawyer, he's in contact with the other lawyer, pass it through.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
And I would say if this one gets bumped again, then we have him served with a constable.
Yep.
Yeah, hand it off to a constable, the constable will chase him down, get it signed, or say, hey, delivered in hand.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that till we are, you've got to get a constable for a ride one too. Out of a ride one.
Yeah. So you got a house, two hundred and, well, not two hundred and, two hundred and.
Two hundred O'Neil.
Well, you guys are busy.
We just got another one too, eleven O'Neil. A gentleman, Adam called me, had to do a well-being check. And you walk in the house and you just gotta stick your, find, find a, a window somewhere that's open where you can breathe. And literally, it was wall-to-wall flies, you walk in there, it's a swarm of flies in every single room in the house.
Was that the medical from last week?
Yes. And that is, Steven was a bus galiza. I don't know if he's related.
Okay. They'll let us know.
And that, I did a collection order on that, and that's going to Tri Valley, because Tri Valley is his caretaker. So, uh, they can't let him in the house the way it is.
It was really difficult getting him out of the house.
Yeah. Okay, so what we got?
Thank you very much, sir. Yeah, let us know. Mr. Congress?
Uh, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in the early nineteen seventies, I actually lived next to twenty-seven North. And the bedrock is like eight feet below the cellar. In the spring, all the cellar's filled. And at one time, just about every house down there had a well in the cellar. Because I remember in the, between seventy-one and seventy-two in the spring, I actually had to bail the cellar. And it was about three feet deep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Discussion on proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-five Selectman's Budget, anticipated vote.
Well, it says table until next meeting?
Table. We're tableing that, right?
Yeah, we were waiting on the insurance numbers still.
Are you gonna table it? Okay. So that's tabled. Okay, next thing is discussion and appointment of Kathleen O'Dorn.
O'Dorn.
O'Dorn. For a three-year term to the Election Committee, anticipated vote. Do you have any injections, anybody have any injections to?
No.
Make a motion? Nope.
Read her a motion. She told me something differently than what she wrote. So leave the motion out of that.
As a register for a three-year term?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Kathleen O'Dorn as a registrar for a three-year.
How is this posted? Was it posted as an election committee?
It was.
It's gonna have to be next week.
Okay.
Because it was in.
No, she didn't give me this until today.
Oh.
But what she said was what I posted.
All right, so repost it.
Wait, what she said was what you posted?
What she said, but when she gave me this, it doesn't say what she said.
Okay, all right, so I withdraw my motion then.
Yep. So we'll table that till next week when it's properly posted. Okay, next thing, warrants and bills, anticipated vote.
All right. Uh, make a motion to pay the following warrants, number forty-seven payroll, fifty thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Number forty-eight vendor, ninety thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-five cents.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richard Hocker, aye.
David Dufran, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the Mass Municipal Association for two hundred ninety-five dollars. Northeast IT for a thousand fifteen dollars. Myrick O'Connell, sixty-two hundred thirty dollars. National Grid, three hundred ninety-five dollars and five cents. Koko, a hundred and sixteen dollars. Warren Water District hydrant rental, nineteen thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. Excuse me, American Tower, twenty-two hundred. SBA Structures, seventeen hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Hamden Communications, fifteen hundred dollars. Renaissance Alliance Insurance Services, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and eight cents.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richard Hocker, aye.
David Dufran, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. Minutes review and possible acceptance of any minutes, anticipated vote. This is for February eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richard Hocker, aye.
David Dufran, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. And Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Uh, so, uh, even though it was a short week, uh, this week with the holiday, uh, we had a lot of happenings, uh, since our last meeting that I wanna recap and, and fill the board in. Uh, today, we had the final interviews, uh, for the position of Town Accountant. Uh, I'm currently checking references, uh, for, um, uh, for the, uh, for the candidates, and I hope to have a finalist before the board, uh, within the next two weeks. I know that, uh, Selectman Ihocker, uh, Madeline Watauski, our current, um, uh, our current, uh, Town Accountant, interim Town Accountant, Don Swistak, uh, were very helpful and sat in on the, uh, on the interviews thus far. Um, so, uh, we are making progress and, uh, hopefully we'll have that before the board within the next two weeks. Uh, I've also been working with the Sewer Department and the Sewer Commissioners, um, on, uh, filling the position of Operator-Mechanic. Uh, I attended the Sewer Commissioners Meeting this week. Um, we had, uh, an interview, myself, um, Chief Operator Ralph Zabrowski and Chair Joan Levine. Um, we have a conditional offer, um, pending with a, a candidate for the position of Operator-Mechanic at a wastewater treatment plant. I anticipate, uh, the Sewer Commissioners to be coming in, um, next week with requests to start that, uh, person at a step one on the wage scale. Um, that will be based on, uh, the experience that, uh, this person is bringing to the town, um, and, um, his, uh, educational background. Uh, so we have been working with the, uh, with them to, uh, fill this position for some time, and, uh, it, it looks like that we will have a, a, a final person to fill this position, um, hopefully by, by next week. I have also been working with the Chief Operator to address building safety issues, uh, at the sewer, uh, treatment plant. Um, right now, our, um, our emergency lighting down at the sewer plant, um, uh, needed to all be revamped, um, and, and, and re, uh, and, and put in some, uh, updated, uh, lighting. Um, and the, uh, the actual emergency lighting down there, uh, some of it was non-functional. Um, so we worked in, in to get that, uh, get that, uh, addressed, that was addressed, and, and one of the inspections that the, uh, I asked the Fire Chief to do on all of the buildings, and we, we got that addressed with, working with the Chief Operator. Uh, there's still some areas of the building that, that need, uh, some emergency lighting, such as the basement and, and the stairwell. We are looking to get that addressed, uh, but the current emergency lighting is now all functioning. We wanted to add, uh, two, um, two sections, one in the basement, one in the stairwell for emergency lighting. Um, that is not currently there, we need to add that. Um, but all of the, of the, the existing emergency lighting is functioning. The, um, there's emergency exit signs that need to be installed in the main commonware, in the commonway, um, common area, and, um, that needs to be done. Uh, we're working with, um, with, uh, the contractor to address those. The position of Assessor Clerk has been posted this week. Uh, as you, uh, may recall, the position for Assessor Clerk has been vacant for a little over a, a month now. Uh, we got it posted this week, uh, at the request of the Board of Assessors to get it posted. Um, we, um, have also put it into the wear revenues. It'll be hitting the wear revenues on the twenty-ninth and on the seventh. That is a part-time position, um, nineteen hours a week, um, for, um, a clerk, uh, for the Assessor's Office. The Finance Committee met this week, and I'm, I'm pleased to announce to the board, uh, that the request for a reserve account transfer, uh, was approved, uh, by the Finance Committee, uh, for twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that is to continue to fund the town's legal account, uh, until a, a year-end transfer can, uh, be done, uh, in May. That's a, that's a good estimate as to get us to May to, uh, continue to not only operate our general, uh, legal, uh, budget, but also to operate, um, our current, um, litigation that is pending, uh, with Myrick O'Connell on, on planning board stuff. So, um, that, that was important, and I, I really thank the, the Finance Committee, Ray, uh, for, for their help in supporting that. Uh, so that has, that has passed. I'm also anticipating an executive session to be scheduled on March seventh, um, at five P M. To discuss the ongoing litigation with Solar, with ZPT Coy Hill. Um, you know, that, that will, that will encompass obviously the board, uh, and planning board members. Uh, I know at the FinCom meeting, it was also mentioned, uh, by Selectman Ihocker to possibly include, um, a member of the Finance Committee so that they can understand, um, some of the complexities of, of this stuff that, um, uh, on the ongoing litigation, the costs associated with the ongoing litigation, uh, with Solar. On February twenty-ninth, I have arranged for Entrez Technologies, who are currently on the state bid list, uh, to make a presentation before the board, um, for Managed IT Services. A copy of their proposal is in your budget packet for your review. So they will be joining us in person that, that evening, uh, to make a brief presentation, and that, and you guys can ask any questions that you may have, uh, of them. I know that myself and Selectman Belize had already, uh, sat down with them. Their, their proposal is, is in front of you, um, and, uh, they will be making a formal presentation. I am working on getting another, um, company as well, a third party to come in to make a presentation and to give us a quote, uh, for Managed IT Services, just so that the board can, can keep in perspective as to the cost and to see if we can potentially save any money, uh, for Managed IT Services.
This is, they're coming next week?
Yes. Uh, this week, I also worked, um, with, uh, CMR PC, um, and, um, a, a project expediter, Energy Conservation, um, Inc., um, who is a recognized project, project expediter, some, 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 something similar to what we've used before as Guardian. This is a different company, but they are also on the list as a project expediter to do green initiatives. Uh, I'd like to see, uh, to get a quote, uh, for, uh, possible, uh, Green Communities Project Grant for our senior center, uh, for, uh, some weatherization and some, um, some, uh, energy efficiencies within the building at the senior center. They're coming out to provide us with a, uh, with a, uh, a quote and to try to take a look at the senior center next Wednesday, uh, the twenty-eighth at nine-thirty. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with, um, a gentleman by the name of Chris Collins, uh, who, uh, who was the representative from Energy Conservation, Inc. Um, and they've done quite a few, um, energy efficient projects for several communities, uh, throughout the Worcester Market. I'm pleased to, uh, to, uh, report back to the board that I, Saturday's, uh, planning meeting, uh, this past Saturday, at the senior center went very well, was well-attended. And I wanna thank Cable publicly, uh, for coming out on a Saturday, for taping it and filming it, um, and, and being able to broadcast that to, um, to our residents. Uh, so thanks Travis and team, uh, for your, your help and support on that, uh, to get the message out there, to, to, um, let people know exactly what we're doing in town, all the planning projects, all the different infrastructure projects that we have, and to listen to some concerns of the neighborhood, and to listen to, uh, some of the concerns of the residents, to see if there's any, um, anything that we could be doing a little bit better, or to recognize a certain section, uh, of a neighborhood that needs some more attention. So it's important to get participation. And I think that's what, you know, we had a good, we had about fifteen people there on, uh, on, um, on Saturday. So on a Saturday morning, uh, to get fifteen people, um, was very nice. And it, I think it, I think it went very well.
Were there any good, like, what were the comments?
So, uh, you know, there were some suggestions, uh, one gentleman, um, who, um, who lives in, in, uh, right, um, right off of, of Main Street, right there, um, across the street from, um, from the senior center, you know, was concerned about the redevelopment and, and the reuse of the community center. He had mentioned, uh, that, that community center that's currently up for sale. Uh, he had also mentioned about in the rear of the community center, um, you know, some of that, that trail that's back there, and he, actually, I have his information. He invited me on a, on a walk through the back area of there to, to, in the warmer weather, to see how, um, uh, some of that, uh, area back there has been maintained and to see if there's any possible cleanup or stuff that we could be doing over there, um, you know.
It's private property.
Um, yeah, but some of it is, uh, I guess, I guess, against the river. Uh, some of the embankment on the riverside, that, that he feels as though that is part of town property, um, that, that.
How much do we own off of the river? Do we own anything off the river? Because I thought the property lines went through the river.
That, that's, that's what he was, you know, you know, wanted, he wanted to take a look at. Um, so that was one of the, um, one of the areas that he had brought, uh, to, to our attention. Um, and then there were some other neighborhood concerns about, um, you know, um, about, you know, planning and, 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 infrastructure improvements and, and, and so on and so forth. But, um, you know, I think it's important to get the word out and, and to continue to, uh, address these issues as they, as they make them up. We do have a public hearing that's coming up on, on March seventh for CDBG application. For, um, March seventh, and the, at six P M, um, here. Um, that will, that'll be the public hearing, um, for FY twenty-four CDBG, uh, grant application. And, you know, members of the public can, can come. They can also, uh, write, uh, to myself or Chris Dumphy. Uh, our email addresses are, are provided on a notice. Um, you know, they can email their comments and concerns, uh, to the hearing. It's, it's, uh, it's important to see participation and to, uh, have some understanding of, of what areas that also need, need, need some, uh, attention in town. Um, and if there is a need for a snow date, it will be, uh, Friday, March eighth as well. Okay, same time and location. I do also wanna report to the board, um, that, you know, we're going through all of the budgets, um, and several departments have asked, uh, for step increases within their, within their departments, um, and for some of their, for, for some of their staff. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, that we're looking at as we look at all of the department's budgets, and one thing that we noticed was that the wage scale for this particular, you know. and one thing that we noticed was that the wage scale for this particular, you know, the end of, for fiscal year twenty-five is the last wage scale that will be available for, for the, you know, for this particular cycle. So a new wage scale would have to be drawn up for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. And customarily, when we look at wage scales and classifications and, and, and pay, you know, there's studies that are done. Studies that can be a third party that can come in and that can do an analysis and to look at, you know, maybe we're paying people too little. Maybe we're paying people too much, maybe we're paying people right on. And, and this analysis can be done by a third party and can really help us set a new pay scale that can be looked at and, and, and drawn some comparisons to. A third party that has done these in the past, like a Collins Center or a UMass or something like that, those are, are, are studies that, that can be very helpful to guiding where we need to be with wages. It may look at, 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 at how we can retain people and, and, and look at, you know, maybe we're paying too, you know, too less, and, and we could be, you know, we, we need to make an adjustment. And, you know, if that's the case, you know, that would help with retention of, of employees. So, you know, I would highly recommend to the board that the board consider, you know, looking at this, because our wage scale is set to expire at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, that we start July first of, of fiscal year twenty-five with a, a, a wage scale study and that we could address that, you know, as, at an article at the annual town meeting. And also, it will also take into consideration, we are also gonna have negotiations with our collective bargaining agreement with Patrolmen as well. So that contract will also be up next fiscal year as well. So we're gonna have to start looking at that and preparing for that. So, you know, that would be a recommendation that, you know, the board should, you know, could potentially consider.
Yeah, and I'd like that study to also look at. I feel like those pay scale boxes are just sort of thrown together maybe. Do they make sense? Is there a better way to do it? You know, just kind of like some guidance, as well as are we paying properly? But what's, is, is there a better way to handle the overall situation? Yeah, a, a study would be great.
I think it's a good idea. Yeah. Because, you know, we were trying to, Mrs. Dusty was doing all the work, and we're trying to get all the information from all the departments and get comparable pounds, and we end up doing all that work and trying to figure out everything, and then, again, with the departments trying to do their work too, it, it just, it would be better if it was a third party that does this type of thing and gives us a, a good scale to approach to. And I think, yeah, we should wait till then. You know, when we hire people, of course, you know, we're gonna look at, based on experience or whatever, if they should be at a, starting at a higher point. And I know we talked about if somebody did an outstanding job, was like really stellar in a department, above and beyond, we would consider it. But if we're gonna do the pay scale all this, where we should start.
Okay.
Would be good with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good plan.
Right, yeah. Anything else, sir?
No, I should do it, sir.
Okay. All right. Any new business?
No, no.
Old business?
Railroad ties? Any traction?
No, I mean, I.
Yes, there is traction.
There is?
There is, I got a call from Todd Smollet yesterday.
Oh, really?
We're sitting down, and we're gonna have a meeting on Tuesday about the railroad ties. He says there are avenues that we can use to get them out of here.
All right, great, yeah, because it'd be nice to get rid of them all out of there and down behind the train station, get rid of those too.
Get them all out of there.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Say it. Cool.
All right, anything else?
Nothing else? Okay. Correspondence, we have correspondence from Pathfinder Regional Vocational Technical High School. Annual budget presentation, which is gonna be on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty P M. So that is a Wednesday. I don't know if I took that day off. I don't know.
So John Mason's our rep to Pathfinder.
Who's John Mason?
How is he?
How's John Mason our rep?
Because that's, he's on the board.
Not the school committee?
Yeah, the school committee, yeah.
Oh, for Pathfinder?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about like FinCom, because I'm like, he left, I know.
Oh, no, no, yeah.
Okay, so if you guys want to attend, you know, it'd be good to see, are you gonna attend?
I don't know, I'll have to see.
I, I have to tell them when I get closer to it, because I don't know if I have that day off, I might have taken it. So I'll figure out when we get closer. But yeah, if anybody wants to attend, the Pathfinder school budget is gonna be on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M. And that's gonna be at the Pathfinder School. Okay. And then, next correspondence, the town of Hardwick Select Board thanked the Warren Fire Department for responding to a structure fire. The house was saved, which is good, and that is very nice of them in Hardwick. And it says, dear members of the board, on behalf of the town of Hardwick Select Board, I would like to thank the Warren Fire Department for responding to a structure fire in our town on Friday, February ninth, two thousand twenty-four. No one was injured and the house was saved, mutual aid is a great thing. And that was signed by the Select Board Chair, Eric Bullheim. So very nice.
Yeah, that's kind of cool, huh?
Yeah.
Did Adam's seen this?
I don't think Adam has seen this.
Huh?
I'll send it to him tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, send it from.
I expected him to be.
Yeah, where is he?
He's at a meeting tonight, he's going over his operating procedures, OS.
Why is he scheduling all these meetings? They're all Select Board meetings.
At least the police chief shows up.
Yeah. That's right. Old faithful over there.
Yeah.
I don't know how he's getting along now, you know, they have his buddy sit next to him.
Notice there's less commotion in that bathroom.
We can send Joe back there with you. It is quieter back there though.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Hardwick, and it's greatly appreciated that you recognize the fire department, it's nice, thank you. And did you have anything for that?
No.
Okay, comments and concerns, anybody having comments?
I do not.
Mr. Byrne?
No, I don't.
All right.
You said, don't ask me.
Anybody from public have comments? Mr. Congress?
Okay. There was a recent medical study out of Boston. And since late October and probably extending until the end of April, the primary respiratory virus is the flu. Unfortunately, it's flu A and flu B. And if you get one and get rid of it, you can later on get the other one.
Along with RSV, COVID, and every other, everything else.
Actually, RSV and COVID are minimal in the state, it's mostly flu. Like you got.
Hopefully, I'm gonna go home after this and tom some NyQuil and good day. All right. Anybody else have anything from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
All right. So next meeting is Thursday, February twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M. And that is our regular meeting, and it could be a executive session added in here at some point, right?
No.
In March, March seventh.
March. So, next regular meeting for the Select Board is February twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, we adjourn.